Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'll get us started for our work session. I'll call our work session to order, being held virtually via WebEx of October 27, 2020. We have two items for our work session tonight. We have the review of the results and highlights of a series of focus groups with members from the Richfield Latino community, with Mira and Yakira. Welcome, Yakira. And we also have an update on the new website for the city of Richfield with Neil. So I will hand it over to open the first item to our city manager, Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much more to add. And Mira received a grant from the city to conduct some outreach with our Latino residents. And they've been working with our executive analyst, Martinez Gavina, and she can take it from here.
Thank you. I'm going to start first by sharing the presentation. If you give me just one second. And please let me know if you can see it. Okay, perfect. So I will pass it on to Yakira, who's going to walk us through the first part of the presentation.
Okay. Hi, my name is Yakira Rodriguez Zavala. I work for Mira as a program coordinator in partnership with Community Education and also for the city of Richfield. Next, Mira. Well, Mira is me. Well, people think my name is Mira, but of course it's not. So I always, when I start saying about Mira, it's me. Well, Mira is a resources center for the Latino community that provides support for those who are in need. Next, in this presentation, we will talk about the project description, the focus group description, the focus group highlights, the survey, and next steps. And Blanca, she also volunteer for this project, and she will talk about the focus group highlights. And this project description was a difficult time for the Latino community during this time with the COVID, finding resources for the Latino community. And also, it was a challenge to get those people to create their focus group. First of all, one challenge was that I have to look for homeowners. I look for renters and people with children's ages in schools. The second challenge was because the focus group will be online. So not everyone has the access to get into those new systems, as you know. So that was a really challenge for me to get the focus group ready. I started in April. For the timeline, I started in April, recruiting the people, the participants. And around May and June, Blanca and I, we were planning for the focus group. And finally, we ended starting with the focus group in July and to finalize this focus group in August. And next, Blanca, we will talk about the highlights.
Thank you, Yakira. And as Yakira mentioned, there were a lot of challenges in going from what were going to be in-person focus groups to focus groups that were done online. So Yakira had about six participants throughout this focus, and they really dug into what are some of the challenges in accessing services and just being part of the community. Some of those main barriers that were highlighted were language, immigration status, transportation, and navigating the services. And as you see here, we have a quote from one of the residents that said, "I do not feel part of the city." And I'll just walk through more in depth as to each one of those barriers that people spoke about. So language. As you may already know, language can be a big barrier for some of our residents who do not speak English. So when Yakira asked them if they knew about the city website, only one of them had heard that there might have been their website. And they did talk about that once they visited, it was hard to access it in Spanish. Once they maybe had the descriptions on services, they said that a lot of those descriptions were not in Spanish. And also, when calling into the city or going into the city, a lot of times, they had difficulty finding someone that spoke Spanish or that could explain to them the services or the process in Spanish. Immigration status. Again, there was a lot of nervousness. There was a lot of fear. And with the political climate, there has been a lot of conversations around safety for mixed-status families. And some of the words that were used were feeling unwelcome or feeling unfit to be part of the community. And some examples that people spoke about during the focus groups was that they felt that maybe services from the city would require a social security number. They also wondered if there would be questions about their immigration status. They also feared that because they were sharing who they were and what their status was, that in the process of getting support, their immigration status could be shared with other agencies that could ultimately create problems. And then also, a lot of people feel safe not being in the limelight. So they did fears some of losing that anonymity. And again, another quote that we have from some of these conversations is, "I do not participate in city services because I do not know if they will ask for our social security." Transportation was also another barrier. Again, with some mixed-status families, some may not have a driver's license or they might not have access to a car. There were some members of the community that spoke that though they are city buses, they do not cover all of the city. And sometimes, they have issues accessing the buses, whether not understanding what times they come and not having that information in Spanish or not knowing where to find that information. Also, with those that have small children in the wintertime, it's a lot tougher to get around the city. And finally, in terms of navigating the services. So once people had access to maybe an application or knew about a service that the city offered, they felt like they didn't have the necessary support to actually walk through the application process. So again, only one out of the six participants knew how to access information of city services throughout the website. And though all of the participants had cell phones that accessed to internet via the cell phones, they mentioned that some applications were not available on the cellphone itself. So it was difficult to fill out that information on their own.
Okay, the focus group highlights continue. We made two we did two of the most important question. And one of them was where do people get information? So during the focus group discussions, the participants shared the places where they can find information about everything. I asked them I asked them where they can have access to get information about the COVID, about programs, about it includes in everything. And then they said in Facebook. I said, "You know, Mira have their own Facebook page." And they said, "Only when you share something from other agency or from the city of Richfield, we will go and see, but only if it is in Spanish. Otherwise, we now will be able to understand or we now will know what is going on." And Mira Resources, they said, "We can come or call you, and we can get information." And Mira. We get also in PICA head start. Some of the families say they have kids, little kids in the head start. So they get those information by the PICA head start. And also for relatives, some people, they just know something and they share with their friends or with their family. Hey, here is in a program or here is you can, for example, to be. And they share each other by relatives and by schools. Some of them, they said, only when the school, the flyer school, they know what's going on in the city, or Richfield, or in schools or around all the city. And also, they share for WhatsApp. During the COVID right now, as an agencies, and I know a lot of people now, more people, they are using a lot of WhatsApp. We created those groups. For example, I create like, I have tons of WhatsApp groups. For example, I have the ESL group. I have the any program that I have or share like only for resources for COVID. So they have more access as they receive it as a message. That's why it's more easy to receive those WhatsApp message. And next, and the next question was, what information and services do residents want? Where they really adding a need? As you know, the Latino community is more in need in those days. But they also wants to have more access and involvement in the city. For example, more programs. For example, educational adult programs, workshops. And they also wants to participate more also with the city of Richfield. And Blanca will talk about the information in training and public safety.
Yeah, so some of the themes that emerged as well is that the community wanted to have more information to safety, and they wanted to know a little bit more in terms of the police department, how can they connect with someone in Spanish? And also about fire safety. They were interested in getting more information as to what are other services that the fire department can offer? And can they offer the services in Spanish? Because they believe that that's something that we have heard as well in past communication with the Lenex community.
Thank you. And access to affordable houses. As you know, with the Latino community, always is an issue in affordable housing. It is very, very tough and hard to find affordable houses as most of the Latino community, they rent. But it is really difficult to find a place they can rent if they, for example, they don't ask for a social security number. They added a need right now as the COVID. Also, as the renters, they receive some help to pay the rent, but not the owner of the houses. So people is looking more for access to affordable houses. And transportation, well, Blanca talked about in the previous before us. So you know, we have issues with the transportation. And Blanca will talk about adult education access.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, some of that information in training, people were really interested as to how they can learn more just about those services. But overall, as to how does the city work? They were having conversations as to a lot of times, they don't even know who they would contact or how does it work? How do some of the laws and services happen? And where do they happen? So just an overall understanding and almost a map of how these services work. They believe that that could be really helpful for them to understand where they can connect and how they can connect. And next, I'm just going to talk about that initiative and the power of really involving the community. When we were doing the or when Yakira was doing the focus groups, a lot of people were made aware of the COVID-19 response surveys that we had done earlier that month. And they took it upon themselves to take that survey and disperse it amongst the community. And just with six people, they were able to collect around 70 surveys that people filled out. They passed it out to community members via faith community, via their family members, all people that lived in Richfield. So just within those two months, six people were able to collect 70 surveys because they were so interested and they were so invested in that those voices were heard and taken into account.
So now I will talk about the next steps. Those are the question from the focus group, the participants in the focus group. And I will say them in Spanish, but you can read them in English. ¿Qué impacto tendrá el resultado de estas reuniones? They are really interested in know and hear from you guys or from the city of Richfield, what will be the impact with those surveys they did with the focus group? They really want the results. They don't want to say like, okay, we finished with the focus group, but what is next? So they want to follow our work. The next, one of the next question was, ¿Qué cambios tendremos en largo o corto tiempo? They said like, hopefully, it's in the shortest time and the longest time. They really, really wants to see the change. The next was, ¿Habrá un beneficio para la comunidad latina? In that question, they during the COVID, they, some people, they don't know in the beginning, they don't know where to find the resources. They get this is this is, perdón, desesperado.
Desperado?
Yeah. Because they don't know where to look their resources. They they want to hear from the city if they will get benefits for them. As you know, there is a lot of benefits for people who have their social security. But there is a lot of people that don't have a social security. They can apply for any of those resources with one person who have a social security. So and they really want the benefit for the community, for the Latino community. And Blanca, if you want to add something or if you have a question, we will be happy to answer.
Yes, so I'm going to stop sharing my screen now. So if there are any questions, please let us know or any comments.
I just want to say thank you so much, Yakira, for your work and your leadership in partnering with us. And thank you, Blanca, for your work as well with Yakira and the community during such a difficult time. I think the results of the survey are so great and so important. So do we have questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Suppo? You're on mute still. There we go.
Sorry about that. I want to echo your thank yous to everyone who was part of this process and also to the focus group members. I really like the questions they had at the end about what the next steps were. And a question I have, is this presentation shareable? Because I think like the Human Rights Commission and the schools and some other groups would probably like to see the results.
Yeah, I think we can definitely make that shareable. And Yakira and I can share it with all of you. And it's also on the city's website now that it's been made public.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Troutman.
And I just want to say thank you as well for the work and for the insights. And I just had one question about the social media piece with WhatsApp being a primary mechanism of communication. And I just, anyways, I don't use WhatsApp a lot, but I use it primarily for person-to-person and small group communication. But I just wondered, is there any insights or reflections about how the city might integrate that platform in its communication with the community? Is there any thoughts or maybe a direction that we might look in the future?
Since we're just learning about this, no, we don't have that yet, but we can certainly follow up on it.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from council? Councilmember Whelan?
I have a, am I correct, based on that last comment, then, that this is? I guess I don't know how new this is. Do staff have thoughts or plans already of next steps? Or is this kind of the time to brainstorm them? I have some ideas, but was curious what what is, what are you asking of us right now? And what is already kind of in the works?
So I can let Executive Analyst Martinez Gavina answer detailed questions with this project. But in general, the big picture is that we are in the early days of doing our equity and inclusion work. And this would be part of what would inform that. And we are just now thinking about how we're going to do the external engagement. We've been focused on doing training with the leadership group and with all staff members to date. But also want to we want to incorporate this into our strategic planning, and we're going to be doing some engagement with that. And so we think that that would be a good starting point to be building better relationships. And we have been, all along, we've been building relationships. It's just been more disparate right now because, you know, the housing, for example, Julie and John's group have been doing work focused on housing and, you know, and Executive Analyst Martinez Gavina has been doing work with Mira on this. And so it's a lot of it's about picking up those pieces and having a more coherent approach.
Councilmember Garcia, do you have any questions? Your sensor camera is not on. I can't see you, but I wanted to make sure you have space.
You know, what I wanted to do is let, you know, I will be retiring at the end of this year. And so next year, I want to be volunteering. And I want to give you just a quick synopsis of the background that, you know, that I would bring to the volunteer arena. And one of them is the last job I had was South Hennepin Human Services Council. And we were a resource center for the communities of Eaton Prairie, Bloomington, and Richfield. And I worked with the Spanish speakers. Second, I also was the Spanish Client Services Coordinator for Legal Aid. Then I also was on the Minneapolis Foundation. Then I went, then before all of that stuff, I was, I was worked at the Chicano Latino Learning Resource Center, and I worked there for five years at the University of Minnesota. And I also was a language line advocate for the people that called beep. And finally, I was also the interim director at the Spanish Speaking Affairs Council. Just called something different. But anyway, and they offered me the job, and I turned it down. But so I have, I have a real good background. The one thing that I don't want to do is, as a civilian, I don't want to be a chair of anything. I don't want to be, I want to work in the background, solely in the background. And I can work one-to-one with people or whatever. But I do have that background that I want to offer my services.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Garcia. I know our community will greatly appreciate your leadership on that once you retire. I had a couple questions or items I wanted to bring up. So I think one nice thing to keep at the forefront, and I don't know the most recent information, but it's always kind of understanding how our community is changing in terms of demographics and just getting a better snapshot and understanding of that. And I know with the census, that will change now. But I believe in that with the 2010 census, the Latino community was maybe somewhere less than 20%, maybe 17%, I'm not sure. But we see today in our schools that it's 40% of our public school, you know, students are Latino students. So I think just understanding our city's demographics as it relates to any issue, but in this case specifically, this is a huge constituency of our residents. And I do think, given the fact that it is so big, I do think, you know, we should find ways to do better to reach out to our families that are Spanish-speaking and better understanding, you know, of those demographics, what percentage of them are, you know, are immigrants to our community versus US-born. And I think in Richfield, it is like a lot of communities, not all, but where the parents are immigrants primarily and then the youth are, you know, born here in the US. And so you have kind of that dynamic as well. And so you have kind of a dynamic as well when you think about, um, outreach. If you're reaching out to the kids or the youth, it might be different than reaching out to parents. So that was one thing. I know that, um, the Department of Public Health or Bloomington Public Health did a survey or some type of study a few years ago in Richfield, um, about what did the utilization of sports, recreation, and activities look like, um, across race? And we did find racial inequities in who, you know, our students being involved in sports associations and things like that. So they have some data, the data's older now, but it's still data that we could utilize to better understand the barriers to, to access to those type of things. But as you were saying this, um, and after I reviewed the sports association study a few years ago, what this highlights to me is, right, the main issues are people having language barriers and the city having language barriers, community members feeling afraid, um, for several different reasons, immigration status, transportation. So that means we cannot just put stuff in Spanish. It, we can't, you know, this was a discussion I had with the sports associations. Putting a flyer in Spanish is a great first step, but it's really not going to achieve the outcome we want. And so, um, translation is a piece of it, but at the heart of what we're seeing is that there's that, that gap in trust and connection. And if we don't have that trust and connection with community and that, those authentic partnerships, we can do things like translate and the reach is not gonna be as impactful as we want. So I think what we saw with what Mira did too, is saying that the barriers are deeper than just putting a flyer out in Spanish. We need to look at how we hire, how we build relationships, how we do build trust in, in authentic relationships with our community members. Um, also, we used to have in Richfield very strong and thriving Latino organizations. Unfortunately, we no longer have. So Mira used to look a lot different and now it's very limited. And so Yacarera does an exceptional job, but I wish we had, you know, five Yacareras working in Mira, but we don't. And I know, you know, Yacarera, you've done so much work and you work around the clock. Um, we also used to have La Misión, that was run by Ruth Evangelista out of Assumption Church. And that was almost like the social service arm of the church that had many organizations coming every single week to the church to meet with community members directly. That is no longer around. And so that's an asset that we don't have in our city. Um, our parents, our Latino Parent Association in the schools is, is much weaker than I would like it to see, you know. And families are balancing work, they're balancing all kinds of things. Um, but we do have a Latino Parent Association, but it's, it's smaller and I think their reach is limited as well. So we need to understand that we don't have the infrastructure we used to have and how do we support building that infrastructure with what we have today? Um, at the same time, we have organizations like VEEP and CLUES who have contacted me and contacted us and other organizations that say, we provide services to Richfield, but we are having barriers in figuring out how to reach your Spanish-speaking community, how to reach your residents. So is there a way where we could partner with VEEP, with CLUES? We all have the same interests and the same need, and it comes from many different points. And of course, the schools are a part of that too. So it is really about figuring out how to embed this work across all of our departments in an authentic and genuine way. Um, that's not, you know, that superficial, maybe translating this and translating that, which that is extremely helpful and beneficial. But we can see with the results of the survey that it's deeper than that and it's rooted in trust. And how do we leverage the organizations that serve our residents, um, to partner with them and, and do outreach? And then the last thing I'll say is, um, we used to do a lot of hiring of external consultants for the Community Development Department to do outreach and engagement or public works on specific projects. And I don't know, it doesn't seem like that's come across our table on the councils much in the past year or two. But I've always thought, man, we should keep that money in-house and invest that money for community outreach in groups like Mira and other groups in the community versus a consultant that's focused on, you know, transportation or community development. Um, and, and I think we could build, get better outreach, um, with our community instead of hiring a new consultant every single time for each project. So sorry for my long-winded, um, but I, response, but I'm super excited and I'm thankful for the work that Mira is doing with us.
No, I really agree with what you're saying, Mayor. Uh, and, and I, I think it will take time, but it's very doable that we can all come together and make, make all of these things happen.
Absolutely.
So I, I do thank, I, I do thank, uh, you know, the people that have Blanca and Yacarera for, for putting, you know, all this effort together. That's what we need. And, I mean, two smart women that, that have, uh, really been working hard and that's something that is really appreciated and commendable.
Thank you, councilmember Garcia. I know councilmember Wayland has a comment or question. And then maybe if nobody else has other questions, we can do the wrap-up too. Because I know that, um, Yacarera, the community members wanted some feedback about what we're gonna do and wanna leave folks hanging. So councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, to that point, I was gonna, and I, I appreciate everything you said, Mayor. And knowing how, like, we have this group of six, this focus group that, like, wants next steps, like, clearly has already demonstrated leadership in the community. Um, and knowing from the, the feedback, um, how important the, like, the relationship building and the trust piece is, I wonder if whatever the path forward is, if this focus group could continue to be leaders in that? And if, um, in terms of some of the comments around better understanding city services and how the city works, um, and not, it wouldn't necessarily have to have the exact same format or maybe couldn't if it's still in the pandemic. But I wonder about, like, could that group of six be part of something similar to, like, Richfield U that we offered, but have it in Spanish? And then, um, like, the whole point of that program or any of the programs the city does, like, I know the police department offers things where it's always about, like, helping, helping the residents know more so they can, like, both for themselves, but also to then pass that on to others, um, as sort of ambassadors of the city. And so I wonder if, um, if there would be an opportunity, like, there, I, I don't want to gloss over, like, there are very clear equity, uh, concerns here. But there's also, like, some, some clear opportunities in terms of people wanting to know more, wanting to get more involved and better understand what the, the programs and services are. Um, so I wonder if the focus group is interested, um, if they could be kind of a, a starting, jumping-off point to make, help make that happen?
Councilmember Wayland, I'll just jump in to say that out of that focus group, there were many of them who said they would volunteer, that they wanted to be involved. So there's definitely an interest in that focus group itself and also from the people that they reach out to. So there's already, um, some of those members who said, please keep me posted. I wanna be involved. I wanna be part of a group. I wanna be able to provide more feedback. So we do have that interest there.
Yeah, and, uh, also I just so want to jump in again about this, uh, the focus group. They also are interested to create, create a Latino group only for Latino because most of them, they don't speak English, so they don't understand. So the focus group was everything in Spanish. And they are willing to, uh, make a, in a, on a group and meet every month. So they are willing to, to create a, uh, a group, a Latino group for the city of Richfield. And they can meet every, every month for now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you can hear from the council, there's a lot of interest and support and gratitude for the, the work that you've done. Um, Mira, Yacarera, Blanca, and we know that it's an area that we need to keep working on. And we also recognize that there's, um, exist, existing partnerships and equity work. And so I don't know if, hopefully this is helpful enough to, to think of some initial ideas. You know, like, working with those leaders, maybe reaching out to some existing organizations who also share the same interest and need to do a better job of reaching out to the group. Um, and then seeing how this would roll into the, the equity efforts. I know we did get a very specific ask as well from the Richfield Disabilities Advocacy Group about how, you know, we would work with community members with disabilities. So it's kind of in the same vein of special, you know, uh, community groups within our city and constituents and, and how we would do equity work. Um, so I know there's a lot of overlapping things. But is that, is that helpful information? And do we have any last questions or comments before we wrap up and move to the next item? Is that helpful, Blanca and Yacarera? Awesome, great. Well, we thank you very much. Thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you for your work. And as you know, we are here to support all of our residents. Um, so please don't hesitate to reach out to us directly, anytime, Yacarera, and we are here to support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I will pass it to the city, to city manager Rodriguez to talk about our next item, which is an update on the new website for the city of Richfield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will just turn it over to Communications and Engagement Manager Neil Ruen to roll out our shiny new website, or soon to roll out our shiny new website.
Thank you, city manager. And it's good to see, uh, everyone again. Um, before I, uh, jump into the website, I would like to say that, uh, we've, uh, in Communication Engagements, been working, uh, hand-in-hand with our Latinx community when it comes specifically more recently to the election and providing more information and that it's, uh, some, it's very, very important to us. And we're working with Mira and, uh, other organizations in the city to make sure that everyone knows, uh, you know, what different types of voting options and different things like that they have. But, uh, I will, uh, just jump right in. You guys can feel free to, uh, stop me at any point with any questions you may have. But I am going to, uh, share my screen. I have just a very, very quick, uh, like, seven-slide little presentation just to, uh, make sure that, uh, everyone is kind of aware of the process and kind of our goals for, uh, uh, what we were doing with the new website project. So the, excuse me, uh, so the primary five goals that we had for the project was to incorporate, uh, city branding. Um, I could pull it up for you, but, uh, back in 2015, the city, uh, created a new website, not created a website, created a new logo and, uh, started to develop a brand around it, um, with specific colors and things like that. And our website, uh, was done prior to that, so there's a lot of colors and things like that. It just don't make a lot of sense for our brand. So really, we're trying to incorporate, you know, trying to build a strong visual identity for the city. Uh, the next thing would be, uh, follow best practices. I, I've come down hard on our previous website. I wasn't here to, uh, to create it or anything. So I don't wanna be the guy that's always like, you know, uh, Monday morning quarterbacking it. But, um, our website was good in some ways where it was kind of like, you know, those Honda Civics that run forever. It was very sturdy and it, uh, treated us well for a very long time. At the same time, as it's aged, it's kind of become, some of its best practices have aged, hasn't aged as well. Uh, also, we're looking to expand communication options, improve the, you know, site's overall aesthetic. Um, if you've been to it, it looks like a website that was created probably closer to 2000 than to 2020. Um, and then increase, uh, mobile accessibility. Right now, our website is, uh, does have a mobile component to it, but it's just not as streamlined as a lot of, uh, mobile websites nowadays. Uh, so the process, you know, the first thing that we did was we spoke to a lot of residents. I was at farmer's markets and dozens of other events, ended up talking to 114 residents. Um, did, you know, like, a five-question, uh, type conversation piece to them of how they use the website, what they use the website for, what changes they would make to the website, what they liked about it, things like that. Then when it comes to, uh, government websites, specifically city websites, for the most part, there's really mainly only three games in town, especially for cities our size and with our staff component. Um, where we can't really just develop our own website and, you know, keep it up internally. It just takes so much time and so much effort. Um, one of the only cities that really do that around here outside of Bloomington and St. Paul, um, is, sorry, Minneapolis-St. Paul is Bloomington, and they have, uh, communication staff that's close to 20 times the size of ours. So, um, we talked with Revised, with Granicus. Granicus is the company that owns our current website. And Civic Plus. Civic Plus recently, uh, redid, uh, Dyna's website. Um, after speaking with all of them, we also reviewed, you know, other cities' websites, um, studied our site analytics. We're constantly studying our site analytics, but also, uh, reviewing them for what areas we need to focus on when it comes to redesigning our website. We also held a conversation with our content creators. Um, if, you know, we need to find out what, what's easy for them, what they like, what they don't like, so they can provide the best content possible, uh, for our residents. Um, as I said, wanna incorporate branding. This is one of the pages from, um, our branding guide. Um, we focus on the blues, the reds in our logo, and also the greens, um, which focuses a lot on the green space in the city, um, how much we're committed to, you know, sustainability and different things like that. Um, the we-, the website best practices that we are focusing on is you wanna have a clear layout. Um, the layout of our website now, um, as I said, it's, it's, uh, dated and kind of how it's laid out is in that way where if you were, you know, surfing the internet probably five, seven, 10 years ago, um, it'd make a lot more sense. Nowadays, it just doesn't have that look and feel where you can find stuff as easily as more contemporary websites. Um, same type of thing is our website right now, um, white space is your friend when it comes to graphic design, um, and website design. And now if you go to our website, like, it's kind of the opposite. Where when it was put together, it's more fearful of white space, so wanna incorporate more of that. Also, if you go from page to page, there's, there's a variety there where, um, when you're talking about a website and overall brand, you wanna be very consistent. We wanna make, keep things as consistent as possible. Um, at the same time, when you want people to click on things or fill something out or, uh, read something, making sure that you have clear calls to action, which we actually do pretty well on our website right now, but trying to find, you know, cleaner, uh, more effective ways of doing that. Similarly, um, intuitive navigation, this is one of the things where I can definitely say, uh, when it comes to best practices, our website right now actually has pretty good navigation. You can find stuff pretty quickly. Um, and we went through some, uh, tests and went through, um, some of the experts that helped design our current website. We found out that we were in pretty good shape. We moved a few things around, but that was one of the things that, thankfully, we had a strong foundation so that we launched our new website. Um, people won't be confused on where to find things, um, because we had stuff, we had stuff, pretty much kept it pretty similar um, because of, uh, the usage rates and things like, um, we're in pretty good shape there. Uh, one of the big things, and this is a little more technical, is having compressed images. Right now, our website doesn't compress images, so sometimes, uh, pages that have a lot more photos, um, or videos on it, it takes longer to load. Um, our new website compresses all the images so that, uh, all the pages load really quickly, which is nice. And then the thing that our website doesn't really do now is, um, you can find stuff using Google or any other search engine you might use, but it doesn't have the components to add that search engine opti- optimization or SEO. Whereas now, when we create pages, we can put in those, uh, search terms that search engines use so that people can find stuff, uh, a lot easier. Some people think that, you know, people go to websites and they go tinker around and things like that, but that's really not the case anymore. Most people are driven to our website. They won't, you know, some people will save it, you know, as a bookmark or something like that to pay their water bills or something like that. Um, but a lot of times, they'll go to Google and they'll type in, like, Richfield and water bills, and it will bring them to the right page. So for our bigger stuff, it's really easy and it, it goes to it right away now. But a lot of times, what we wanna do is for those pages that are a little bit farther down, um, se- second tier, third tier, fourth tier clicks, what we really wanna do is optimize, um, those pages so that people can find them as easily as well when they're using search engines. I, we also wanted, as I said, expand communication options. Our e-notification system now is fine, but we've also really segmented it out where people can sign up for so many things. And then when you sign up for them, there's an expectation that you'll get stuff on them. But some of the things people sign up for, um, either don't exist anymore or, um, you know, don't have those type of notifications that are as regular because there just isn't a lot to report on. Um, this will streamline the process, giving less options, but also in the best, in also then helping us, uh, provide just more information, um, and a steadier stream of it to more folks. Um, the other thing too that the website does, which is nice, Um, the other thing too that the website does, which is nice, which we'll have to do a strong campaign behind is text alerts. One of the things that I hear most about specifically when it comes to uh snow emergencies is people would like to get text alerts and people have been like, whoa, why can't you use the Everbridge system? Well, snow emergencies and like civil unrest that we experienced, um and the need for curfews, very, very different kind of emergencies and the Everbridge system um that the police department uses is not really meant for that. And then lastly, um, we we have alerts and stuff on our website now, like right now, we have notified that uh our motor vehicle office is closed through November 15th. It's right at the top of the page, but it's not your traditional kind of pop up um that catches your eye. It really blends into the site. Um, which I guess kind of has its pros and cons, but for the most part it's its cons. Whereas um the new um kind of pop up for um the most pertinent information and alerts and things like that, especially on the mobile side, really grabs your attention. Um, and on the desktop side of things has a motion aspect to it that catches your eye so that uh individuals can't just gloss over. Um, and then I, the second to last thing is really just improving aesthetics. Um, we can do an intro video on the website. What you'll see when I show you the uh draft version of the website right now just has a picture of a child that's helping uh paint uh one of our loaders for uh snow plowing. Um, and we'll have a photo slideshow similar we have now, but we wanted to wait till after COVID-19 um when, you know, the masks can go away and things like that. It should be a very nice, high quality professional video to kind of uh encap- encamp, yeah, excuse me, encapsulate uh what Richfield's all about and the different amenities and um, you know, just being pro-business and really just every single aspect about the community as possible in about a 60, uh 30 to 60 second video. A lot of cities have had a lot of uh, a lot of success with that of keeping people on their sites longer and re getting more people to return to it. Um, and then also organize infor- information in a more linear basis. So as I was talking earlier, um a lot of our stuff is kind of all over the place where you might have information here, information here, and it's just um stacked on stacked on stacked where it's a little bit difficult to necessarily find everything, but instead organizing a way that makes a lot more sense. And as I said, you know, our website is our electronic face to our community. We want it to be as professional and nice looking as possible. You know, it's not, you know, if you go through this process, right, it's not difficult to do that and that's something we wanted to do. Because as I said, as this being our electronic billboard in many sense, the word that has hundreds of thousands of visitors annually, you want to make sure that it's a place where people can find what they want and also make it to make it feel like it reflects the values and the vision of the community. And lastly, this is probably one of the most important things is increase mobile accessibility. Um, we, when I started here, still the majority of people were accessing our website through desktop. It wasn't a lot. It was, I think, 54% were still accessing it through some sort of desktop computer. But I, as recently, my recent check, which was, I think, last week, that when I looked at uh the numbers that we've experienced through 2020, is that 60% of our website users are accessing it through their phones. They're paying their water bills to their phones. They're filling out applications on their phone. They're reading news items from, you know, that we have on the website or checking calendars or reading council agendas. They're doing a lot of phones. We need to have the most mobily accessible website as possible. And that's one of the things that we've really been hitting on, and I think that's the product that we're really, really, really going to be proud of. Um, as I said, the current site has a mobile component. It works. I I access it on my phone probably almost daily um with different stuff that I'm doing and checking on, but it just doesn't have um that ease of use that really people are looking for when it comes to a mobile website. Um, and with the changes um on the backend, it should be faster on phones and information should stand out more. So that's kind of in a nutshell. It went really fast, but I know you guys have a meeting, so I wanted to get as much information as possible uh to you guys. But now I will stop sharing that and I will pull up uh two different things. First being, you guys all recognize this. This is uh the website that we currently have. As I said, this is the uh kind of our notification or pop up type situation. And uh this is all the, you know, information that uh we have. You've all seen it before and everything like that, but uh I just wanted to show you that before I show you uh what we're going to be going to. Um, one of the bigger, the headers are all similar right now, um and this is, the website is we'll say like 99% done. We have a few final uh tweaks that we have to make. And we also have staff training that's scheduled for next week, the following week. And after that point, then uh hopefully within the next uh two to five days, we'll be able to uh launch the website. So I'm looking for the middle of November at the absolute latest. So as you can see at the top, um our headers are similar, but our dropdowns look a lot different and they also stand out a lot more, uh which is good. And we start out on this homepage where people can find out, you know, as I said, find what they're looking for. Um, before our search was tucked away in the top corner um of the website and now it is very, very prominent. Because as I said, if people aren't using a search engine to find what they're looking for on the website, this is one of the main ways that they're looking for. Um, we take for granted a lot of times, you know, internally that we stuff is on the website. We can do the clicks to get there and everything like that. But um, you know, making it as accessible and as uh usable as possible for individuals. And you scroll down the homepage, um I've had this loaded, so it doesn't, it didn't pop up, but these uh uh little circles here, uh they actually have an an a small animation um that bring people in and these are our mega menus from previously. Um, we're going to add a COVID one here as well so that people can have uh all their COVID information at their fingertips right as from the beginning of the page. Um, oh, yikes. I, uh, because we don't have any calendar content right now for our site. Um, this is where the calendar will be. Um, the items I can uh show you if they pop up, which they don't. I'll share it in a second. Um, um, that's where our calendar will be and then our news notices right here. Um, these, both the calendar and the news items will stick out so much more than they did previously. Um, they will catch people's eyes more and our hope and expectation is that more individuals will read them. We have a very high, high viewership when it comes to news items as well as to uh to our calendar items. Um, but they still stand out as you can see previously. They just didn't really stand out. You had to go quite a ways down and then you had to really almost like search for them. I know they're there and stuff like that, but like, you know, whether it's kids at home or the motor vehicle office being closed, um, it's a headline. It's different than the subtext below it. Um, but it really just doesn't stand out compared to when you have um something like this that really, really pops um to make sure um, you know, people know um what's happening. And then clear office hours, clear, you know, contact information, everything like that, so. Um, that's kind of what it is. Um, I can poke around and show you, I guess I can show you, I'm sorry, show you one more real quick. Um, and that has to deal with uh a pop up. I don't have a pop up going right now because I technically don't have access to the uh to the uh website, but uh here is an, here we go. So this is oh, it's not popping up for whatever reason. Um, just I guess, uh, I will, I can send you guys some screenshots afterwards um of what the pop up and stuff look like, but uh especially on the mobile version. Um, and with the uh animation on the desktop version, um it really should stand out and should uh help us, you know, when we're having situations where we need to uh inform residents about something, get the information out there quickly and have it stand out. So at that point, if you guys have any questions, I can answer them.
Whoa. Any questions from folks? Comments?
Uh, Mayor, I I don't have any questions, but I do want to make a couple of comments. Uh, number one, when, you know, when um um, city manager Rodriguez came on board and then Neil was here, you know, it was, it was, I'm glad that that Neil is working and doing this and participating in this now because I think he's a lot more uh used to the, to the way we do things and he's also learned a lot about the community. And he's, he'll, you know, whatever he's going to do, I think is going to translate to something very productive and very transparent. And and that's exactly what we need. And I thank him and the, and the city manager for the fact that when I asked um for, you know, when you first click on on the website and I asked for there to be an agenda little box um, um, for, you know, for for meetings, that um he he did uh develop that and it has been just a lot easier to access the agendas and uh it's all, I mean, I've been, I'm really appreciative. I know the, the one thing about Neil is he does a superb job. And he, I'm just, you know, I I can't um acknowledge him enough in terms of, you know, he knows his craft. And with that, I, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm going to to uh exit the meeting, okay?
Okay, thank you, Edwina, and we're going to see you at the council meeting?
I I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to make it because it it just depends, but I will text you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Troutman. Oh, did you hide your hand?
Yes. Thank, thank you, Mayor, and I just want to say, Neil, thank you. And it's hard to appreciate it because we see a beautiful end or nearly end product here, but that is so much work. It's the reflection of so, so much work. So uh for you, Neil, and um and Pam, I just want to say thank you and incredible job. And I I can only guess at the hours you spent to really improve and make this more accessible for folks. And so I just want to, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And then my only question was, I know as we um continue to um to build more bridges to our our community that has disability issues, um have we had done any, any ADA compliance testing or kind of?
Yep, yep, that's the, the, that was one of the bigger things that we focused on um besides the language uh accessibility. Um, is that we made sure that it's 100% ADA compliant as well as having uh other uh aspects. I I'd have to, I'd have to double check what they all are. Um, but it's 100% ADA compliant. It goes beyond. I believe that they're, they're, the way that they always explain is it's 110% ADA compliant. I wouldn't hold it to them, but uh that's, it's one of the things that makes it with the colors and everything like that. Colorblind people can have a lot more access to it and um it's a, it's a, it's a good product that will um help our builders, not just with our uh disability community, but also our communities that uh speak uh other languages their first language as well.
Councilmember Ruen.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, yes, thank you, Neil. Thank you to everyone who played a role in this. I think all of the the priorities are exactly the things that needed to be updated, especially um like having that that search function working better and more easily accessible is huge. Um, I wanted to, a couple of questions. First of all, um, can you help me understand the the company that we went to, was that to, do they simply design it? Or do they also then like, I don't know if manage is the correct term, but like?
Oh, yeah, it's a con, it's a content management system, so. We were with uh Granicus or Vision, their product is Vision Internet, or I think it's Gov Access now. Um, and we moved, we're moving over to Revise. Um, but what they do is they obviously build the website and then they provide uh the support for it as well. So like if we decide, you know, uh, we want to add that, that um, they, and it's a kind of a big thing that involves um the type of coding and stuff that uh we can't do um in-house, they do all of that. It's all built into the contract that we signed with them.
Okay, but it it sounds like that's for like bigger things for something as simple as like, okay, the agenda's ready or this video is ready, let's upload that, that that's something we can do pretty easily in-house?
Oh, no, we do like all the content generation, we do all in-house. We did that previously and we do it now. So like, I don't know, I guess a good exam, I guess example would be like, let's say you guys hate your uh agendas page or something like, like want to revamp the whole agendas page, how it looks, how it's laid out and stuff like that. We can do all of that in-house. Um, theirs is more of the larger, bigger pieces, like if we um, I don't know, like wanted to do just something like kind of, and I don't want to say wild and crazy, but a larger piece that we couldn't do in-house, but any type of content generation. Um, like if we wanted to completely revamp uh the structure of like the fire department or police department by adding pages, taking away pages, um, we can all do that in-house. We've done that. We, that's how we do it now and that's how we'll do it uh moving forward. The nice thing for our content creators is that our site right now is, this is my, I think, sixth content management system I've worked with since I've started my career in communications. And this is by far the most difficult one to work with for whatever reason. Um, and when it's hard for us to work with it, we can't make the pages necessarily sometimes exactly what we want. Um, this is a much more like, if you guys have ever used like a Wix or a Squarespace, like where you kind of drag and drop, they always call it. Um, and it makes a lot more use, easy for us to use and make the pages how we want them to be and to keep them consistent.
Awesome. Um, one other, sorry, this is a pretty specific question, but one thing that I know residents ran into um somewhat often, um, the news updates on the current website at a certain point like expire? And like you can't reach them anymore? Will, does this new one, does it like archive updates? So that if it's like an announcement about a program, that someone can then still go there like a few months later if they're interested in the program?
You know, I would have to, I, so our website now um has kind of that function, but usually you set a next, like for a lot of news items, like if you can't, like a program like signup time expires or like, you know, there's a deadline, we usually like make it go away. But um we can, at least for internal practices and stuff, we can, for those more ongoing type pieces, we can either have a longer runway um so people can um view them longer, or we can, usually there's a way to like archive them so that people can search later on. So I will um make a note of that and then uh make sure that uh we we have that functionality. I mean, it's there. I guarantee you it's there. We just got to make sure that we kind of set an internal practice for it.
Councilmember Supple.
Um, first of all, thank you. This was just amazing, totally amazing. Thank you so much. And I know I've been getting a lot of questions from people about things like e notification systems and text alerts. So they're going to be thrilled with that to see this coming out and also um the mobile access is really hugely important, so kudos. This is just amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what else to say. Everyone said it all. This is tremendous work, Neil. It it is a, it's amazing to see the new website that was such a huge need for our city for several years and it's going to really help our residents uh more easily access different services, understand what the city does, get connected to what they need. Um, and it's going to be more inclusive and accessible to more of our residents as well. So this is huge, a huge um win. Thank you so much, Neil, for your leadership on this. We are extremely uh grateful and looking forward to this being rolled out.
Yep, I will keep everybody in the know about uh dates and everything like that. As I said, uh we have training next week, right after the election, and we have uh training the week after and then hopefully it should be good to go after that. The exciting part too is we're also um right now throughout this process, we've uh deleted like 200 pages that were really, really old that no one, literally no one ever visited. Um, so that was good, but we're also looking at ways to take the information that we currently have and try to organize it just a little bit better as well. And the last thing I just at least have to say besides thank you for, for their comments and their feedback, I'll make sure they'll incorporate them before this website goes live, is I have to really give a shout out to uh our part-time communication specialist Kate Hason. She's worked really, really hard on this project and uh Lieutenant Brad Draino over in the police department. They're two of my like super, super users um that have done a lot of work when it comes to the design. They're two individuals that um I would say one of them likes doing design work and the other one is just like, I don't care if it's better blue. Um, but they did a great job and they really made the process um a lot better because, you know, I can make decisions, but a lot of times it's better to have two, three, four sets of eyes on it. And with, really without them, the project would not be anything like it is today.
So thank you so much. Thank you, Neil. We really are appreciative and excited. Thank you. I will adjourn our work session um with five minutes before to give folks a quick break and I'll see you at the council meeting.
I will adjourn our work session um with five minutes before to give folks a quick break, and I'll see you at the council meeting.